Okay, we can move on to our regular meeting. Unless you really need a break, we'll be happy to break for three minutes for you, Mr. Dockett.
Excuse me? I didn't know we were going to pledge, that's all.
Oh, okay. Well, right now we have called the order for our regular meeting of the Northfield Township Board. Let's stand for the invocation and pledge. And who is going to do the invocation? Oh, Ms. Bellinger.
May we humbly petition the guiding hand of divine providence to this assembly and also to our daily lives. May thy wisdom and compassion penetrate our preoccupations and shine light and love to all. Amen.
Bellinger.
Here.
Dockett.
Here.
Zelnik.
President.
Chockley.
Here.
Manley, here.
Otto.
Here.
And Chick absent with notice.
Okay. We have the consent agenda. Did anyone need anything pulled out of the consent agenda for discussion? Ms. Bellinger.
Yeah, I'd like the wastewater treatment one pulled out, and I would like the public safety one pulled out as well.
Hang on a minute. Okay.
The, it's called, yeah, the public safety one, yes. And wastewater treatment.
Okay. And, Mr. Dockett, you had some that you wanted to pull out?
Minutes.
Minutes?
Excuse me? Minutes, fire and sewer.
Which minutes? All of them?
No, just the, you know, just the one, I just got a couple, one question on that. February 13th one.
Okay. Then...
I got one question on that and one on the fire. One half a minute on each one.
I also need the minutes of the 27th polled.
Okay.
Both meetings?
Okay, so...
No, just the regular meeting.
Okay. Well, we're pulling them, anything anybody needs pulled, we're pulling it right now. Okay.
Public safety.
Do we need the police pulled for any reason? Okay.
Was one of the options the police?
Police and public safety.
I got the public safety one. I didn't get the police one. I pulled the public safety.
Okay.
I wanted the fire.
That's the fire.
Okay, so we've got the fire.
Is that fire?
Fire is, she pulled fire.
Okay.
Well, public safety, which one is it?
This one here.
The police or the fire?
The public safety is the fire.
Okay, yeah.
That one there.
That one, fire. Okay. All right. Anyone else down here, anything need pulled?
I think we got it all.
We didn't get the community center.
Well, the community center's not pulled.
Not much for consent.
We didn't do the donation report or the zoning report. Or the North Village expenditures.
Yeah, I didn't do much.
Oh, don't mention that, no.
We fixed that one. We got that email, that was funny. It's like, what?
Okay. So, we have pulled those. I'm going to put wastewater treatment in front of ZBA report so that we can let Mr. Will, Mr. Willis go. And is Chief here?
He'll be back in just a minute.
He'll be back in a minute. Okay, so we'll put those two. Mr. Willis, are you going to stick around for your agenda item anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then we'll put your wastewater treatment in front of your, in front of that.
Can we, okay.
All right. We'll put the minutes at the end, at eight.
And so where are the reports going that were polled? Wastewater treatment plant and public safety?
Wastewater treatment is going after the manager's report.
Okay.
And public safety is going after wastewater treatment.
Could we all just, yeah, why don't we just put them all after and maybe if we have to move it?
Okay. We just have the two.
Did anybody pull the police?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or the...
Nope. Okay. So...
So where is the fire going? Is that after wastewater treatment?
It's going after the wastewater treatment report, which is after the manager's report.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to make a motion to adopt the remaining portion of the consent agenda.
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Any more discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda. No, wait a minute. I'd like to make a motion to amend the rest of the agenda, to remove discussion item number two. Ms. Chick wanted that pulled. Okay. So I would make a motion to adopt...
There's lots of ones. What can I remember?
Discussion item number two. Okay, so...
I mean, do we want to discuss it?
She's not prepared and she's not here, and she wanted it pulled.
There's nothing in here.
There's nothing, there's nothing in there, so...
So there's a castle.
Right.
Can we just table it when we get there?
Yep, it'll come back.
Yeah, can we just table it when we get there?
It's just a discussion item. Oh, I see what you mean.
Okay.
I prefer to just table it.
Instead of changing the agenda.
Instead of changing the agenda. I don't like doing that.
I know you don't like doing that. Okay, we'll table it when we get there then.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you for the consideration, I appreciate it.
Okay. So I will move to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, thank you. Call to the public. We have another opportunity now to speak to the board. Feel free to come up, state your name, your address, and try to keep it to about three minutes, if you can possibly do that.
Can't hear you. George Brown, 7868, Shady Beach. I want to give you some here. Back in 2004, this was the famous nemesis, 75 Barker.
I don't remember that. Oh, there's more than one.
Anyhow, I came here to the ZB just to talk about 75 Barker. As you know, it's been an ongoing situation with us. So I did some background work on it because there's some things out there that's really not true. So the one person I did call, I did call, past Fire Chief Bill Close, who lives out in Arizona. I didn't call him, I just emailed him. And I asked him, how did it all start?
Can you hold this up to your mic? Speaking to the mic.
How did we get the load on that building? What happened back in 1997 or right around that year? He says, well, what happened is the township was storing all of its records up there. But unfortunately, they were putting them down by the stage and so on like that, so it was causing a lot of heaviness on the floor there. So the, at that time, then Bert Williams brought a firm, an engineering firm, to find out, you know, if they could store all those records up there. Well, they did come out and they did do the study and everything else, and it was determined that those records, when they're stacked like that, they had to go because they put too much pressure on the floor. But they could put them one by one on the floor and so on like that. Well, then at that time Cindy Wilson, who was the treasurer, said, not, that's it. And I was here at that time, she says, we're going to throw them. So she got a 350-yard dumpster, and we were up there throwing all those records in there because of the weight of the floor. So that beginning, that was the beginning of the weight of the floor, something like that. Then it kind of really spread after that, and it kept on going. And then in 2004, the Kiwanis had an interest in the building, used it for a club building because there really wasn't anything here at that time. So I did, and a couple others did, Pam Woodworth did, and we went to an engineering firm called Cornerstone. And they did another engineering study on the building, so on like that. Well, they brought it back and everything else, and I'm not going to get too much into the weights because there's 60 pounds per square inch, there's 100 pounds per square inch, and there's 125 pounds per square inch. Well, this is all just, and this is addressed by the, the beams had to be put in place and so on like that there, and what the pounds per square inch. After I get through here, Andy's going to come up and explain that, what we did.
Okay, because you're getting, I'm going to start you over, but...
Oh, I started off, I got another two minutes.
You've got three, you know, try to, try to wrap it up.
No, I'm just about through anyhow. Because I want Andy to come up here because we got together ourselves, and we went over there, looked up, someone said there was a missing beam. We didn't see any missing beam or anything else. And we did a complete study, we counted all the beams and everything else. Then I got all these records out, and they showed Andy, and Andy said, wow, look at this here, this is what we're going to talk to you about now, what we seen in this here, this here study that was done by Cornerstone, so on like that.
Thank you.
So, but now from what I hear now, that you might be interested in, one thing I'm going to tell you, Kiwanis only, right now, we're only interested at lower, the lower building, not, it's all in the top. As you know, we lost our building with, over around Main Street, and now we have to find it. The Rummy Shield's been the best thing that ever happened in Kiwanis here, here in Whitmore Lake. We were able to service more people, we were able to help our young people out and do all sorts of stuff because we had income coming in. And it's really not hard, like we had to sit there and draw money in or do stuff like that. But anyhow, it's been a, really a savior for our Kiwanis Club, to have that building. But remember, how many people at that, wanted that building at one time, and never happened. The alarm company across the street over here, the, of course, Kiwanis wanted it, Human Services wanted the building, the library wanted the building, and Living Waters wanted the building. I think it's time now, let's get something in that building and get use out of it and so on like that. So at that time, I'll retire here now that Andy come up and tell you about the loads and restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Andy Lecatus, I live at 9249 Lakewood Drive. And continuation on the same 75 Barker. As George said, we went over there and we looked yesterday, and he shared me with me these documents. And based on what the usage of that second floor is to be used for, is what is required to do any strengthening of that floor, if anything. If the floor is to be used as a dance hall, banquet room, such like that, it's fine, just the way it is. If you want to start storing things up there, then you may have to then do some sistering of the trusses, which will then take it up to 100 to 125 PSI, and, or as the ultimate was, was to put extra beams in. And the price tag on that, and what you'd have to do and destroy what you'd have to destroy to get those in, makes that rather prohibitive. So the big thing that we, as far as Kiwanis is concerned, and I mentioned it the last time, the last meeting, is that that building is actually two different floors. The second floor is, is, has its own stairway to go up. There's a vestibule which breaks the two rooms apart. So Kiwanis could use the downstairs as a retail store. You could then turn around and remodel the upstairs and turn that into a beautiful banquet room, and I'm sure there's people that would love to use it for wedding showers, baby showers, whatever showers type things that you want to do. And you could actually have activities up there during the various times that we have big activities here, such as our parade and fireworks. So, at any rate, I think the potential for that building is absolutely, overweighs anything of trying to take this thing down and make it into a parking lot. It has a lot of value, and it has a lot of history, and I think that if the township should go out and take a poll of the people, I bet you'd all want to see that they would rather see that there, using it for such as the Kiwanis, and a banquet hall, and such, and for graduations or whatever. You can put an elevator in there without any problem, it sits there, it just needs some foundation work. New windows, absolutely. The windows could have plastic, a plastic, like Plexiglas inserts put in to weatherize the windows, as long as it's not being occupied, they could, then, you can do that. And if you had to use it and take that out to get out, of course you can't because they're all steel windows anyway, so you can't use those as exits. But the point is, we could put those in there and that would help insulate the building. So this study here that was done in 2004, which you guys don't have, Kiwanis has it, if you'd like the copy that I have, I'll certainly turn it over to you. It may save having to have another one done here in 18, but there again, maybe it's not such a bad idea to have it because that way we know that what's here in four and what you do in 18 is pretty much the same.
Okay.
And those two by tens that are sitting up there are two by tens. They're not today's engineered, you know, today's, today's milled beams.
Thank you.
Anyways, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And... Let's see which we listed here.
Okay. Mr. Brown may have given me a copy of this. Okay, I'll make sure the board, okay.
Beams.
Okay, I'll make sure the board all gets a copy of that. Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak to us now at call to the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to board member comments. Do we have any comments from the board at this time? Ms. Otto.
Okay, I just wanted to address comments that were made from the special meeting prior to this in regards to the roads. And I wanted to thank both of the people, all three of the people that came out to speak about Northfield Church Road and the safety issues on the road. This is the kind of conversation that we need to have with our community in regards to our road. Every year, we do, we go through and we analyze what roads that need to be repaired, and we work with the road commission to make sure that we identify, we identify funding, we identify opportunities, and then we prioritize. And this is the kind of thing that we need to know. A lot of the roads, like Lehman Road, was repaired because of the issues that they had on that road. Six Mile Road was repaired because of the issues that were on that road. I know that we were looking out in the area between Joy, Warren, Northfield Church Road on a number of occasions that we know that we have to do some limestone repair and everything. And I just wanted to thank the residents for coming out and speaking and letting us know that there's an urgent need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dockett.
Lemon Roads and, not in our county. It's not in our county.
I know.
I call it lemon, if it's the same little deer you're talking about. I would like to know if we could take a couple minutes...
But it got repaired.
Excuse me?
It got repaired.
Oh, yeah, it got, yeah, that's nice, too. They raised it out there now. I'd like to know what the rest of the board members or how they might feel. I'd like to take a couple minutes at the end, maybe, or something. I would rather come to the meeting at seven and stay longer than to try to get here by six. That is a problem for me, and I don't, I know we all, all you work somewhere, so I'm just wondering if, how you guys would feel about it. So I'd like to bring that up at the end of the meeting, maybe.
Okay, you can, go ahead, we'll bring that up at the end. I'll put it down.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Bellinger.
I already spoke about the issue with the roads, and it's, I don't need to repeat that. I would like to make mention that I did go to Lansing and spoke to a, the Senate Energy Committee. They had a bill in there, basically number 637, had to do with 5G infrastructure. The concern, and even MTA had voiced concern with this as well, is that this new infrastructure is expected to be deployed throughout the state without seeking approval of local jurisdictions. So this was a concern of how it was pretty much bulldozing any say that local units of government may decide that this, they prefer not to have this unnecessary infrastructure deployed in this location or welcoming it in that location and such. So it was removing that possibility from local jurisdictions. They did make some modifications of the bill, and MTA then went to say they were neutral on that piece of legislation at that point, but it pretty much only addresses historical districts only, giving them the only option of approval or authorization or denial of such infrastructure. So I wanted to mention that I went to Lansing and spoke on behalf of just local units of government, giving, preserving the rights of local units to represent the people. I also want to mention I caught Wahlberg's Coffee Hour this morning out at Dexter at the American Legion. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members? Ms. Bellinger, I mean, Ms. Zelnik, thank you.
So, obviously 75 Barker has been going back and forth, and I know I briefly spoke with the supervisor, and I have said this before, I'd like to get a second opinion on the change of use. And I've heard from lots of meetings that I go to, that Green Oak is much friendlier than us on businesses, which, you know, I think we're all committed to doing what we can to bring businesses into this township within the areas that it's zoned for that. So I don't know if I need to make a motion, or if I can even make a motion, or how we would pursue maybe having Green Oak's Building Department look at it and see what they think. So, I know that...
I had a conversation today with Green Oak's zoning administrator about that exact thing, and she's willing to give her, write back her impression on 75 Barker. I just need to send her some details. So she's willing to do that, but she did corroborate the fact that when you have a change of use, state law kicks in and you have to have it brought up to compliance. But I, but they only charge $100.
Right.
Which charge 200, so...
Maybe that's something we can consider to do, is just charge 100, because I have heard that in the past. So I appreciate that, so next steps on that then is?
I will send her some information tomorrow. She's going on vacation though Friday, so I'll send her some information tomorrow, but hopefully we'll have something back by the next meeting from her.
Okay.
And she didn't say we would get charged for it, so hopefully not.
Well, if they, I will commit, if they charge us the $100, I will make a donation to pay for it.
Okay.
So if they do charge us for that, so, thank you for pursuing that. And I do have one other thing, is that we saw that there was a 720,000 K grant available for create placades in southeastern Michigan. I don't know if we can direct our township manager to look at that to see if we should can apply.
Go ahead, Mr. Ames.
It's my understanding it's on the park and recreation agenda for the meeting this week. And then I also have looked into the details, and based on the information they provided, the maximum grant you can get is 80,000 with it. So it's in the 10 to 80,000 range of project is what they're looking at. The figure you mentioned is all southeast Michigan, that they have that much available. But we can certainly pursue it.
I think that does my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Otto.
I do want to add that also the Whitmore Lake Elementary School is also looking for funding for playground equipment as well. So they were, this was brought to their attention.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I should have mentioned that I believe our representative, our state representative Lasinski's going to have a coffee hour at the library, I believe, this Saturday, the 17th. Is that at 11:00 AM or 10:30 or, I'm not sure of the time, but I think it's 10:30 or 11 that she's going to be here at our library on Saturday.
Okay, I don't know what time either. Posters downstairs, okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, I won't talk about road commission. I would like to allow Ms. Avril to leave at this point since we're past your reports, and unless anybody has any last minute questions for Ms. Avril. I know it's a long day.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's correspondence and announcements next, and in your...
Just make a comment. So as I made at the last meeting, I did talk to, this is regarding to the road commission tree removal. So I had an extension, extensive, Brunt Schwartz or something is who I spoke, Schalak or something, S-C-H-L-A-C-K. And we went back and forth, and again, I, my comment, my overall concern was, we really, they didn't communicate this to our board. And our residents are coming in, which they should, and they're saying they're not happy with it. And I think the project was kind of rushed through, approved on January 3rd, and going to be done by 3:31. So, I mean, you could say great news because the government's moving quickly. However, I just think we need to have better communication when something like this has happened. I think there should have been a public hearing here at our township because we're being impacted on it, and just to get all the facts out, talk about it, and have, you know, items of concern be brought up from the township residents, certainly the road commission has their concern about having trees where they are, and maybe even our public safety director would have some input as well, but I think it should have been and could be and should be handled going forward differently. Past is past, we can't make it go backwards, but we certainly need to build a better relationship going forward.
Ms. Bellinger.
On what Zelnik was just speaking about, this morning I want to add that while at Wahlberg's Coffee Hour, there were people in the audience that solicited him for information on the issue of the trees. Obviously, it's not anything, he has any control or voiceover, but I wanted to mention that there were people in the audience, more than one, there was at least a handful that was mentioning the trees on, I guess, Dexter Mast Road or some other area that's also getting the same treatment regarding the trees. So people are pretty, pretty, you know, and I understand their concern. I actually enjoy the trees on the side of the road, but, I mean, some need to be removed, but I don't think, it almost looks like a road widening project is what it looks like. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Does it have something on it?
That's what, that's what Ms. Zelnik's talking about right now.
Right now.
Yep, we're talking about that.
What happened to five and six and seven?
Those were consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are all, we've moved them elsewhere into the agenda, Mr. Dockett.
No, no, that was, you're talking the donation report, the North Village report, what other one?
This is just board number...
The zoning.
Yeah.
So that was all consent.
Right, we already adopted all of those. Okay.
Still one of the others?
No, we're on correspondence.
We're on correspondence and announcements.
I didn't have anything on.
Okay, thank you. All right.
But I did, this is the 21.
Yep, we're talking about that one right now.
Okay.
Mine must have got mixed up somehow. You know, when I did it, I marked each one. So this is the way my packet came just away.
Okay.
So I don't know. I want to get some extra. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the ZBA report. Ms. Otto.
Yes, there was no ZBA meeting for the month of February.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Chick is not here, so the planning, she sent an email about her planning commission report. I hope you all received that. The next item... The next item is Parks and Rec report, Ms. Bellinger.
Parks and Rec will be meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM, and I did hand out to the board just that, about that grant. Thank you, Lenore and Jennifer, for bringing this to the attention. I absolutely fully endorse private grants, and this is what this appears to be. It's a grant regarding playscapes, Create Playscapes in southeast Michigan, tailored towards rural areas and, what's the other thing they're looking for?
Low income?
Yes, low income, that was the other one, low income and/or rural. So, this is something that I believe we're going to get some assistance with the manager. And like I say, we're going to discuss this at this Thursday's Parks and Rec meeting, here at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Land Preservation Committee.
So, we had our meeting on March 9th, and we discussed our March, our February 8th meeting. We thought that went really well. And out of that, we had a lot of presenters and we got some facts. So, what we want to do is put like a fact sheet together of the benefits of land preservation, so the committee is working on that. And in particular, a couple items that stuck out to me at the meeting was, you know, land preservation, it's a land preservation and development. I think sometimes we get the mindset that it's land preservation or development. And I think the board that succeeds in doing both, and this is my personal opinion, will be successful. Think we could unite the community by having an "and" instead of an "or." And then the other item is that I think, one item that I have been learning is, I always thought that, you know, if land was preserved or in a conservation easement, that it went off the tax roll. You know, through these meetings and through my education, it stays on the tax roll. So, I think, again, that's some item that I've been learning along the way. So, we had at our, as mentioned, at our February meeting, we had around sixty people that attended. We had a lot of experts come in. And I thought, as I said in the last meeting, what went really well is we had snacks. We served a little snacks that we brought in, we had conversation. And again, I think the board should think about doing that at a couple of its meetings going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Financial and Treasurers Report.
So, I'd just like to make one comment on the financial report that actually has the CD and the checking. I did talk with our police chief, and a couple CDs are coming up that we have in there for the fire truck. So, when they come due, we're going to look to do a three month as opposed to a six month if possible, a short term. But nothing more than three months, so just want to make that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Docket.
I'd like to thank Lenore, she came by my store today, yesterday, and explained to me, helped me look at my packet here to let me know where these things were. And I'm, I'm very happy to see that, that we have eighty-one thousand, or eight thousand one hundred dollars for the rainy day fund on the cell tower. And I think we got, I don't know where the other one is right here. And that's the cell, what was the? Where was, where was the? The one per, this is the cell. The other one is-
Page eleven, I think, of thirteen. Yep, the rental property fund.
Seventy-five Barker, we got seventy-five hundred in there, so, thank you very much for, and we're going to, and you're going to change it slightly, so it might be a little easier to-
Yep, so we, we talked a little bit about-
Thank you.
A couple changes, when we look at the actual, just for your information, when we actually look at page twelve of thirteen, the actual numbers, we're going to work with Yvette, and we thought we'd say rental income and fiber footage. So, what we've done is, it used to be in the general fund, so we'll denote that it now has its own fund. And then, we will actually put it on this page, like we have the law fund, the fire fund, and the wastewater treatment. We're going to add the fire station number two cell tower and seventy-five Barker rental. We thought that, that would be an enhancement.
And when we get enough money, we can lend it to Mr. Wagner, and he can buy a fire truck with it, and he can pay us interest.
Okay. Is that it for, for that? Okay, fund balance, we've, that's another sheet. We're good there?
I just call it all the report.
All right.
I just wanted to say on the fund balance that, I think when we started our, our, the new election year, we started off in the forties. And we are now at seventy-four percent, and that is only like six percent away from where our goal was at, to be at eighty percent.
Eighty-five. Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
So, we're close.
So, we're loving.
We're getting there.
So, we are getting there.
Yep, we're making huge strides.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the Supervisor's Report, and so, I've been trying to figure out where we can save money also within our budget. And so, I'd asked some time ago to have us look at installing a meter for the wastewater treatment of this building, so that we're not paying for seventeen residential units when we're probably only using two or three. So, Mr. Ains has been proactive in working with Mr. Willis in that. And we will hopefully be getting a meter in the near future, could save us a lot of money. The streetlights, I'd been looking into for some time, and we pay about thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand, no, it's not thousand, thirty-two thou, thirty-two hundred to thirty-five hundred per month in electricity costs for our streetlights. And I was talking to DTE Energy about that, and taking a look at another analysis. So, I'm hoping to get some more information, but we could, if we changed out the mercury vapor lights, which are no longer allowed to be installed by law, we could save eighty-seven hundred dollars a year. Now, it will cost us something to have that done, but I'm getting that information, so we can find out what our return on investment is. We did not complete the survey with Cobalt Communications, so we should ask for our three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars back. So, that will be helpful, the general fund. And then I did inquire with the Washtenaw County Building Department to see what their services are like, if they should provide services to our township, instead of us having our own building department. And I'll be having more information for you all on that, so you can think about it, see if that's something that we might want to do. It would certainly free up some staff in the office, and they have a very good system over there. So, we'll be getting some more information on that in the near future. Yes, and then the DDA has been working toward going ahead and getting those inspection, well, they haven't, we've got a couple quotes in the process for getting inspections of seventy-five Barker to assist the board in making decisions on what they might be able to do. And so, I'll have that information for the board as soon as they're done with it. It will be a while, I can't imagine it happening in the next week or so. Mr. Ains and I attended a capital improvement plan seminar, which was very helpful, I thought, on March 6th. And as part of our redevelopment-ready communities, should we get into that program, we need to have a capital improvement plan, and we should be having one at least revised every year. We haven't had one done since the planning commission did it, like five years ago, something like that, four years ago? Six years ago? It's been a long time. So, anyway, we'll be looking at that. And I'm hoping that we might be able to apply for a priority project with Urban County. We shot all of our money up until 2023 to do the park, to do the sidewalk on Main Street, but there are some funds available for low to moderate income areas, and we do have a couple areas in our township that fit that bill. And we, no funds were used last year, no funds were applied for, for priority projects last year. But Urban County is still going to maintain that, and we could theoretically apply for some funds to be used up around Whitmore Lake, even in our North Village area. So, I want to look into that and see what I can bring to the board that might be of interest. That's my report. Mr. Docket.
What kind of lights were put on the bridge?
Oh, I believe they're LED lights on the bridge. We have not received a bill for them yet.
I would like to know what that is when it comes, please.
Okay.
And is there a way for us to tell how much the, it is to run them lights or?
I'm sure we can get an estimate from MDOT.
All right, and the Building Department going to Washtenaw County, I would vote for that. That will take the politics out and make a lot of people feel a lot better, I think, and a lot happier, in my opinion. And so, I'd be looking forward to, to that happening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Ains, time for Manager's Report.
Thank you. The board had previously authorized me to sign on your behalf the lease with the LawNet people. This is for the office space that will be built on this floor. Dan and his people from the wastewater treatment plant have been helping with getting all the material that was in the way out, you probably saw it as you came in today. But the company has already come in, secured the application for their permit. I did confirm again that they do not need zoning permit, because this building is already zoned for office space. And they are planning on being under construction shortly, and being in the building by May 1st, which is when their rent payments begin to the township. We estimate that over the course of, of a year, we would save, receive an income about twenty-six thousand dollars from the rental of this, and over the five-year period, be over a hundred thousand dollars of income. So, I think it's a good use of the facility, and I appreciate the efforts Chief and his people made in, in bringing to our attention the prospect of having this party come here, and the attorneys for working out the negotiations. Next, we've talked about the staff person who resigned. The board authorized me to fill the front desk receptionist position. We have advertised it, we have received over a hundred applications for the position. Jennifer has worked on that extensively to narrow it down. I've reviewed all the applicants, applications as well. And she has started the oral interviews to narrow down the ones that we feel are most likely candidates. And then she and I all together will interview people in person, people we feel are finalists, and hopefully bring back a name to you shortly. In addition to that, the, the code enforcement and zoning have been working well together with having Vidia from McKenna here half days a week. And the code enforcement officer is making sure her schedule coincides with that. And then they work very closely with Mary Bird in the Building Department. So, I think they're making strides in that area. The SOL grant is the one that you were awarded to study the wastewater treatment plant, the sewer lines and so forth. It's a five-year study. We've already received reimbursement of over a hundred thousand dollars back on that. And Dan is working extensively with the engineering firm. We have received some preliminary reports on some aspects of it. We will be bringing those back as timely to the board at different stages to bring you up to date and to ask for action on certain items. And then, as far as the capital improvement plan, as Supervisor mentioned, the training was very interesting. Under state law, you're required to do this every year, but under state law, you haven't been in compliance, apparently, for the last five years. The plan that you have now expires as of 2018. So, I do intend to bring back to the board a capital improvement plan as far as the budget process. But they pointed out at the seminar, this should really be originating with the planning commission in the future, and it should be done every year, so it's a rolling study. So, you've always got five years plus the current one in that prospect. And I think it'd be a good way to involve the public, but this time it's going to take longer, I think, to get it together, and, and we won't be able to go through all the steps that we will in the future. And there's several other things that have been involved. When, I do want to mention, I appreciate the Chief meeting with a couple who were here and a couple of their neighbors about the issue dealing with the drainage. That's why, when he came in, I asked him if he would go talk to them. But when this complaint came in, I initially went right to the Chief, who is the Safety Director, who I look for advice on safety issues, who at least for the last year, probably several years, has been the one that has been inspecting your roads and your culverts to make recommendations. So, what I was trying to convey, and I think they misunderstood, was he had indicated in the short term, we could access the property from two different directions. But he recognized in the long term that there is flooding, there would be a problem between these houses and the railroad track. And so, once we received the complaint, immediately contacted the road commission, who in turn contacted the drainage commission. And I've got all that documented by emails, if you want to see the exact time schedule. But I expect to hear very shortly from the road commission how they expect to proceed. One of the nice things with having their facility built here in town, in the township, I believe, is that they are close to respond to issues when we do have emergencies. And I think they did respond quickly to this one blocking it off. Now, we just have to make sure they respond quickly to fixing it. And with that, I end my report, unless you have questions.
If, if I could, Ms. Ains, I'm not sure if you misunderstood me, but there is only one way in and one way out to those properties. When, when they, when they closed that road, you can either only get there from Joy Road, or you can get there from Nala Road. And what we've done with both police and fire is identified the addresses for which we need to respond from Nala Road, and which addresses we need to respond from Joy Road. Now, if, if we do get a two or three or four inch rain, just east or just west of the railroad tracks, it does flood regularly. I drove down there yesterday and checked it, it's, it's pretty good right now. But we could end up cutting off some properties there that we don't have access to. If that's the case, I'll make sure, I'll check it daily, and I'll get with the road commission to make sure we either are piling so much gravel up there that we can make sure, or remove the barricades and somehow come in from the side that's blocked off. I don't know if we have any other options other than that right now. So, and, and that's what I conveyed to the residents downstairs when, when I first got here. So, I'm not sure if you misunderstood me, Mr. Ains, or, or just what. But currently, there is only really one way in and one way out. And that does present a challenge to us in, in the firefighting world, but it's not something that we haven't trained for and aren't prepared for. It's like fighting a fire on a dead-end road or a private road, something like that. So, I hope that clears it up, and that's what I relayed to the residents.
Yeah, I guess my understanding was that half the houses could be reached from one side and half from the other, not that it was a throughway. But if I misunderstood you, Chief, maybe tomorrow you can show me on the maps and we'll figure that out.
I'll drive you right out there and show you.
That'd be fine, as long as you don't leave me in the water. Thank you, Chief, for following up on that.
Thank you.
One, one item.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Zelnok.
So, in your report, you asked for the budget, you know, any thoughts, roads? That's my thoughts. Put money towards roads.
I second that, that's what I said last week, roads.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Docket.
I have a comment, not a question. I disagree with you about the- I disagree with you about the, this building is a PUD. And I believe you're breaking all the laws to have this new thing upstairs here. When you have a PUD, there's only one building in this township that's a PUD, and it's this one. And you cannot bury from the original plan which you are doing, so I disagree.
I appreciate your comments. I did talk to everyone I could talk to that are ones that could give us advice. I talked to the bond attorney. I talked to the planning consultant, to our own attorneys, and to the zoning administrator. And if you wish me to check with anybody else, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, moving on to our agenda items. Wastewater treatment plant, this is a report that we had some questions on first?
Yeah, I had a question on that one. Yeah, my question was on this report on the day of February 21st, near the end of the sentence. "We finally traced the extra flow to a manhole that was damaged during the US 23 construction or territorial." I'm curious if that has been repaired by MDOT. Will it be? Who will pay for this? What needed to be done? So what was the problem? What needed to be done? And I would certainly expect that the construction, if that was the cause for the damage, that MDOT or the, should cover it, be responsible for it.
Yeah, we have a new manhole sitting by. We always have spares. We have not made enough.
I can't hear you. Is your mic on? I can't hear you.
Yeah, we have another manhole sitting by for standby that we have not had an opportunity to work here back there and replace it yet. And we have not yet talked to MDOT about the cost involved in that yet. The manhole sits way back off the road, down along Five Mile. Way back in the woods there. It extends way back there. And we weren't aware that it was underwater for a while. And our flow kicked up to a rate of 3 million gallons a day and we were, it was just backing up the whole plant till we found it. We still had a high flow after that, but at least we could control it after that.
What was the condition of it? I mean, what was the problem with it?
When they cut brush through there, they had a piece of equipment that knocked a big hole in the lid. And when the creek rose, it went over top of that and we had like a four-inch hole of creek water going in. And it was giving us like 600 gallons a minute, which is like 800,000 gallons a day extra too. On top of the already high flow that was really hurting us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dockett.
Page one, 221 is the date halfway down the page. What's P-E-G-G-E-D? Does that mean bogged?
Pegged. The meter was pegged up to the very top and wouldn't go no further.
Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I looked at it.
Might not be spell right.
What is that? I've never heard of something like that. Next thing is, it looks a little rough on page two where you've got the gallons of 2017 at 23. I guess this M-I-G, is it?
It's million gallons, million gallons a day.
Okay, okay. Well, that's what I wondered. And there's nothing in the graph here shows me, but I didn't know what it was. I thought maybe it was mega or something or another. But on this, the 17th, it was 23.510. And on the, the total was 26,307.
That's total million gallons for the month.
Yes, but when you drop down to the next one, it says February 18th, excuse me, the 17th, it was only two inches of rain. So on the 18th, there was double that. There was nearly four inches. So I would expect it to be more. Is there something wrong with this or?
No.
I mean, it would be, it would be normal. If there's two more inches of rain, there's going to be more water. I mean...
It wasn't the total amount. It was that we had almost two inches in a day is what hurt us. And the snowmelt on top of it and everything, it just contributed to a real high flow.
Yeah, but I mean, but we know why.
Oh, yeah.
If there's twice, if there's twice as much.
Yeah, we know where it comes from.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm trying to say. I mean, it makes sense when you look at it to see that it's two inches more. One's two inches and one's four inches. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more, the next item is the public safety report. So, Mr. Dockett.
Bill on page...
Police or fire?
Police, a fire. There's no page number, but it's on the second page. Mutual. A given.
Mutually a given.
Yeah. It says, there's two for Hamburg, two for Ann Arbor, three for Salem. And you said it's five. Why wouldn't that be seven?
Oh, because I made a mistake.
Oh.
Should be seven.
All right, that was, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for checking my math.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Elnock, go ahead.
I just have, on the first page, it's probably been like this for a while and my apologies for not asking.
Are we on police or fire? I'm sorry.
I'm still on fire.
Okay, first page.
We have like injury crashes, seven, and unknown, 19. I mean, what's the unknown? Is that other?
So unknown crashes are crashes that, everybody has cell phones nowadays and if somebody slides into the ditch and that person that slid into the ditch didn't make the call to 911, the people driving see it go into the ditch.
Okay.
They say, okay, there's a car in the ditch, but we don't know if anybody's injured. So we go out and check those out.
Thank you. And then my next one is on page three, you mentioned about the pond hockey. It would be page three, the third page in. It's on the actual, when the written starts. So you mentioned about the pond hockey and you mentioned about the...
The fire report, the board communication.
Are you on one, two, or three?
Three.
Pond hockey, number three. So you had mentioned in here about potential, the alcohol management and that you spoke to people. Can you tell me who you spoke to and can you just maybe elaborate a little bit on this?
I spoke with Mr. Iqueno. And the lady's name escapes me right now. They were both here at that last meeting, speaking of it. I made them very aware of the problems that I had. And these problems just didn't happen this year. These are things we've been trying to improve and trying to improve. And I just need a commitment from the leadership and the directors of that program that they don't expect the police department to manage their alcohol for them. And I have a few ideas. They're open to having these discussions. But, you know, it seems like every year we come up with an idea and a thought and they say, okay, yeah. And then when we get there, the mismanagement of it is, is, and we've been fortunate that we haven't had incidents. And don't get me wrong, I think the pond hockey is a tremendous thing for this community. We just have to tighten up on the alcohol management at the, at the three-day festival or event.
Is there a reason that we need to provide them a liquor license during the event? I mean, we have plenty of ours in the area. I mean, we approve the event with a liquor license.
We approve, we don't approve the liquor license.
We approve the event permit with
That's true.
The liquor license.
That's true.
So could we as a board say that they could do it, but without the liquor license?
We could have that discussion. I highly doubt that they would.
Trying to open a bar without a license, it don't work.
I have a few ideas.
But there's a lot, there's enough bars around where they, they could go to the bars instead.
It just needs to be controlled a little bit better within the organization. And, and they need to take responsibility themselves instead of saying that, oh, we had the police department here. They can take care of that. And, and you know, while we're not afraid to go out there and write tickets, we just try to make the event work and make it to be a safe event. So, and we do similar stuff with the Fourth of July. But we don't have an organized beer tent at the Fourth of July, so. So I'll report back when we, when we get closer to it next year. And they're very aware of my concerns, so.
But, okay, but when they're given direction and they're told, do not do this, and they do it anyway, that is a problem.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that direct though. It's kind of the indirect stuff.
Well, when it shows up in the volunteer tent, when they're supposed to have taken it out, how does it show up there without somebody knowing? And where does the buck stop? You know, it would seem that the buck stops at Mr. Iaquinto.
Well, especially when it's underage drinking.
Underage drinking is totally inappropriate.
It's unacceptable.
Yes.
Yep, I agree.
And it's ongoing. Okay. Well, I have another question. Is it a violation then of their liquor license, I would think?
Yes.
Okay, why would the state want to give them one?
Because the state doesn't come down here and enforce it.
Right.
They wait for us to enforce it or they wait for if there's an incident or a complaint.
So were tickets written for underage drinking?
No.
No. Oh, but it was witnessed?
Yes.
Okay.
Not by anybody on duty.
Not by anybody on duty. Okay. That's a problem. Okay, Mr. Dockett.
Let's not jump to conclusions. We had trouble like at the Catholic church, you know, 20 years.
Absolutely.
We've had trouble at German Park. Not, you know, not many, but, so maybe they just need, you know, they need to ball them out or something. But I don't think it's, I don't think we should get too excited about it, in my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Elnock.
One more. So if anything were to happen, it might be a question more for Mr. Ains. Is the township liable for anything? Potentially, if there was a bad accident again and there was, that came from, you know, who would be liable? I mean, if you have a bar and you serve someone that's drunk or illegal, obviously the bar is liable.
We don't own the place.
I know, I'm just asking because we give the permit.
We give the permit.
I'm just wondering if there's any liability for the township if any incident was to happen.
You know, as a general matter, you've got governmental immunity. I think the problem would be if you ended up in a situation where you were issuing a permit despite, you know, repeated serious problems that you should have known to not issue it, where it's rising to the level of sort of recklessness in issuing the permit. You could potentially have an issue, but I think it would have to be pretty extreme.
So my question now is, now that it's in writing, does that have any influence, but no tickets were issued? Again, I'm questioning you, Mr. Ains. I know it's a, but it could be case.
I can't answer that question, Ms. Elnock. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be fact-specific. I haven't done any research on it. I don't know.
All right, thank you.
I'd like a break.
I missed that. Did he want, oh, you'd like a break? Okay.
Anything for the police department?
Yeah, we, one, two, and three are for Mr. Willis and Mr....
No, but I mean, we didn't have any. We'll take a break.
Okay, five minutes. Break.
I forgot each one.
All right, here we go. Like to call this meeting back to order? Okay. The hm? Yeah. Uh, the the first item on the agenda is the wastewater treatment plant's request for the purchase and installation of the two return sludge pumps. So I guess I would, anybody else besides me want to make a motion on this one?
I could if I find the right page with all of it. Oh, here we go.
It's item number one written at the top, yeah.
So I make a motion to, uh, the township approves the purchase of two uh sludge pumps at a cost of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. This includes eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five for each pump and sixteen and a half thousand dollars for the installation.
Okay. That was a motion by Ms. Bellinger. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. Manley. Okay, now we have an opportunity for discussion. Does anyone have any questions of, um, Mr. Willis about this?
Yeah, just, um, you'd mentioned initially, we're gonna buy one, and now your recommendation is buying two, I think, is how I read it. And the reason for that is?
Well, we we were initially think we could do one this year and and one after the next budget year, but then looking at our budget and talking among ourselves, we decided it would be much better to have one contractor come in right now and do them both at the same time. And uh, by talking to the contractor too, he said he it would save us money doing it that way, too. And we'd be all done with it and wouldn't have to deal with it next year again.
And these pumps are coming from Wixom?
Yeah, they're coming from Kennedy Pump.
Okay, that this was the controversial item at the last meeting when you weren't here. We were wondering why you didn't get a bunch of other bids, but.
Um, actu- actually, um, all all our submersible pumps are flight pumps. We've, um.
I can't hear you.
Um, can you hear me now? Um, all, just about every pump we have on our pump stations are flight pumps. And a great majority of them are interchangeable between pump stations, too. This particular pump here that we're using inside is can also be used in a pump station submerged. And we do have a couple of pump stations that had the same exact pump. Um, this gives us a lot of flexibility and, you know, we lose a pump somewhere, we can move pumps around a little bit without having to run out and, uh, buy a new pump or something. Uh, we've had excellent results with these pumps. We very, we never have burned up a pump. Occasionally, we'll get something in there, they'll plug it up, but, um, we've had really good results with them.
Great. Any more questions of Mr. Willis?
Yeah, I'm not sure that explains why you didn't get more bids. Nobody else makes the pump, is that what you're saying?
Correct. It's a factory rep for that pump. Uh, they're made in Sweden of all places.
Thank you.
All right, and you didn't get any, um, bit, you're using the same contractor that has installed in them before, is that correct?
Yeah, he was low bid before.
Okay.
Yep. And actually, his price went up like a hundred and fifty dollars for, and it's four years ago, so I thought that was a real good price.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Dockett.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Chocly.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Um, the next item is, uh, for the installation of the water meter at the township hall. And I guess I will make a motion that we, um, get the water meter installed at the township hall at a cost of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Pardon?
That's not the cost, I don't believe.
Where's the cost? Oh, and the meter is? Oh, yes, okay, I'm on the wrong page.
Installation one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five and the meter would be one thousand sixty-five for a total of two thousand.
Two thousand, nine hundred and ninety thousand. Okay, so I will, I'll just remake that, that we get it installed for two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Okay, so that's a motion by Chocly. Do we have a support? I'll support. Okay, support by Zelnak. Um, do we have any questions on this of Mr. Ains or Mr. Willis? Mr. Dockett?
I I guess the the township doesn't want to pay their fair share to the sewer for sewer services, seventeen REUs. The last sewer plant supervisor said that was a fair deal. And they, and we start paying about two years ago. So if the last supervisor of the plant said that that is what this building was supposed to pay, I think that that, that we're just trying to get out of paying the five thousand. I I just don't think this is fair. And then, in the same, on the same day, we're gonna talk, the manager wants to raise the price, wants to talk about raising the price of the sewer. So the township's gonna say four thousand dollars, but they're gonna spend three thousand dollars to do the job. So, um, it's just sickening to see this. You know, you guys are just, just don't want to pay the fairer share for using the sewer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, just, did you, anyone else want to comment before I do? Oh, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
So, um, with this installation, with our new tenants, are they paying any part of the water? I don't recall. I don't remember.
I don't know that they were paying any part of the water.
I know they were paying utilities, but I didn't remember.
The contract called for one REU.
Okay.
What, are they still gonna pay it?
Yes.
What the township's not gonna pay.
I had asked Mr. Willis some months back to see what would be involved with this. And it's my understanding, Dan, you tell me the correct number, there's about thirty different meters in town where different large customers have gone in and put meters in, so they know exactly how much they need to pay. It doesn't matter to me. It's just, this is the information I've received, and whichever way the board wants to go is fine with me.
Yes, I understand, but you see, they paid. They're the owner of the place. They paid because when when, if they don't have a pump, I mean, I understand why they, why the, uh, car wash would have it, why the community, why the schools have got them, you know, uh, why the convalescent homes got them. I understand that, but they paid the money to have it in. And we know that they, we got screwed out of a bunch of money over on the boys' school because the pump was broken down for years over there. So how did we ever know how much, and just like the here, how long this pump can last? We'd be paying another thousand bucks maybe in a year or two to, for a new pump. But, so that's what I, didn't we?
When when the, the boys' schools was metered, then their meter broke. And we estimated it for like three or four years, and it went from like, um, we were estimating it almost fifteen million do- fifteen million gallons a quarter. And when they finally got the new meter, it dropped down to six. So the state wasted, because they wouldn't, uh, go and fix their meter, so they ended up paying a lot more than they should have.
I'm gonna, no.
Okay, that's fine. Ms. Bellinger.
Yeah, I I don't know how to feel on this. I mean, I I really don't, uh, I'm not leaning towards putting a meter on. I mean, having the taxpayers pay for the meter, I I don't know. I just, um, and there is something to be said about if it's based on square footage, and that's how it's been for years, why would the, why would it be now singled out and changed for people that put in a meter, I guess? I don't know. I just, it's just.
Mr. Willis, have a comment?
At the request of any customer in the sewer system, uh, they can have a meter put in. If they think they're paying too much based on, uh, their REUs, based on square footage or something, they can, they can request a meter if they think they're paying too much.
And they pay for everything.
And they pay for everything, which, same way it is here. The township would be paying for the meter, not the sewer department.
Who modern terms? How do you read the meter?
Uh, we actually have a remote reader that comes up and gives us, uh, reading in thousand gallons.
Ms. Zelnak, give a comment. So I I personally, I'm going to vote yes for this because the installation is three thousand. Right now, we are paying fifty-seven hundred, so I'm gonna round a little bit, so I'll say six thousand. I'd say at any one time, we have about fifteen employees here, I mean, any one time. And it's hard to believe that each employee is using an REU. So I think the payback period for the taxpayers is going to be rather rapid.
We got twenty more coming in. Don't forget.
So, and we thought with all those people coming in, there, we in our contract said one REU. And now we are paying, if you subtract that one, sixteen REUs. So I think the payback period will happen with, in, um, so, within a year. I think we're gonna go down to less than three thousand in our, on our price. So I think the payback will be fairly quick, if not quicker than in a year. So I am voting yes, 'cause I think seventeen REUs for the number of people that we have in this building is too much, way too much, so.
If you read from my report, seventeen REUs represents two thousand, eight hundred and five gallons per day. That means, uh, we would be flushing the toilet every forty-nine seconds, twenty-four hours a day, to use up that kind of water.
Well, we have, we have, uh, two shower rooms downstairs. We got three cells over here. We've probably got, uh, thirty stools. And we got a washer and a dryer. It's like a house, so I I wouldn't be sure about that.
So anyway, that's, that's a lot of water, and, um, I I would prefer to have that money back in our general fund so that we can use it for, uh, other items than, rather than paying for, um, sewage, um, treatment that we aren't using. Ms. Bellinger?
Now, is this for the entire building? I mean, we're talking all in the back, all over here, the police and the fire. I mean, this is the entire building we're talking about, correct? Is that correct?
Maybe well.
It covers all the potable water. When the chief fills his tanks for the fire truck, that's from a different source, so that won't be going through this meter. Is there anything else I've forgotten, Chief?
No, uh, excuse me, uh, the non-potable water, like, like, uh, Mr. Ains said, goes basically in our fire trucks. And that very seldom goes down the drain. That usually goes to fires or goes to trainings and ends up out in another pond someplace or, or in the ditch, uh, that type of thing, so.
When you wash out your gear afterwards, does it go in the creek?
That's correct. Oh, no, not in the creek. I thought you were gonna say, yeah, sure. No, it goes in the sewer, Mr. Ains.
Where's that water come from?
Uh, that, that's potable water that that is used in the washer, washing machine.
Okay. Um, is that the, that's the last comment here. Um, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Is there any chance of maybe tabling this for just a little time for further information or anything?
Does anybody feel we need more information?
I've had one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Manley.
Did we get any other quotes or just Mastercraft, or is this?
I don't know. Did we get any other quotes, Mr. Ains or Mr. Willis?
No, we didn't, no. We were just kind of an informational thing, and, uh, Mastercraft does the plumbing in the building, I understand, so we thought they would be the logical choice to do that.
I suppose we could get a couple more, but it's, it's gonna amount to, you know, fifty bucks or a hundred bucks at the most, I would think. I would, I would think our, that our manager can, um, and Mr. Willis can, um, manage this project just given the go-ahead. It's just, you know, go ahead and get another quote, Mr. Um, Mr. Ains, but I would like to see it move ahead rather than having to deal with this again on another agenda, as long as we're all in agreement that this is a reasonable thing to do. Ms. Bellinger?
Can I ask Mr. Willis just to, um, if you would just, you know how, what, how much basically what you think this facility bas- basically uses? Is that fair to do that, to change it to a meter, you think, regarding the, um, the typical way of measuring the square footage for a building regarding REUs and the billing, if that manner? I mean, just, I'd like to hear a little more about this.
The pump's legal. I mean, excuse me, the meter's legal.
Yeah, seventeen year REUs for the number of people that are here and the amount of time they're here seem really excessive. We don't have any real big office buildings that are metered, so I can't really go by anything like that, but if, um, down in North Territorial, New Balance Technologies, I think they're paying fifteen REUs for that building. And you've been by there and seen the amount of vehicles that are there.
Uh, could we get this, would it be possible to put this on the website that, do you have a website for the sewer plant? Well, on the, on the Northfield Township website, we ought to advertise that these people are, when, they wanna build a gas station and they come and say, oh, you got eight pumps, so you have to pay all this one, what they, what, I mean, they just go by the gas pump. Isn't that true? I mean, the, the, but when they, these people find out that, that, that they can get a meter, I'm afraid our rates are really gonna go up for, to, to finance this plant. But, but anyway, I think it should be put on the website, that they have an alternative. So.
Yeah, if the board wants, we can add that to the website.
That's, that's what I would like to say.
Yeah, business friendly, sure. Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Chocly.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Dockett?
Is this for the, oh, put on the website or is this for this?
For the meter.
It's for the meter.
Oh, no.
Bellinger?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item, um, oh, now you, feel free to to leave, Mr. Willis, 'cause it's, I know it's late. The hiring of paid-on call firefighter Jeffrey Smith. Um, I would like to make a motion, um, to approve the hiring of Jeffrey Kleynan Smith as a paid-on call firefighter, trainee, contingent on passing background check and physical.
Support.
Motion by Chocly, support by Otto. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, why does not the chief do it?
The chief do what?
Why is the chief not doing it?
Doing what?
Who's this for? Who they gonna work for?
Oh, Mr. Wagner.
Well, why, why is he not doing it? Why you doing it?
We always, you can't make a motion to hire someone.
Well, no, I just wanted to know. He usually makes the, he, he usually hires people.
Well, no, I mean, I think somebody usually makes a motion, but, and then after the motion's made, I comment that he is a local Whitmore Lake.
All right, I gotta handle myself. Sorry.
Okay.
Yep, there you go.
Go ahead.
Don't confuse us.
We're supposed to make the motion first and then we discuss, right? So there you go.
Motion first, discussion. Don't confuse us.
Mr. Kleynan Smith is a, a local, uh, Whitmore Lake resident, Whitmore Lake High School graduate. Um, he doesn't, he doesn't have any background or, or training, so we'll have to put him through all that, but, uh, we're, we're always looking for good candidates for the fire department.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call vote on this?
Did somebody quit? No.
Uh, I mean.
Are you short?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we're short.
Thank you.
And, uh, we're, like I say, we're always accepting applications and, um, uh, we, we have three on leave of absence right now that we're expecting to get back pretty quickly within the next month or two, so.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Otto? Yes. Zelenak?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chocly?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Next item is, uh, DDA bylaw amendments. Um, there's a memo and the, um, redlined version. Next item is, uh, DDA bylaw amendments, um, there's a memo, and the, um, redlined version, yes, redlined version for you, um, in the packet, these are very minor changes, um, to the DDA bylaws, and, um, so, I am going to make a motion that, um, we adopt, well, actually, the, the DDA has already approved these, so, um, I will make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the bylaws with the minor amendments that the DDA has adopted. So, I've made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Manley. Any discussion on this one, any questions? Mr. Docket.
Uh, I don't think they're minor changes, I read in here where it says that, that the board can hire.
Well, that's not an amendment.
Huh?
That's not an amendment. Um, the amendments are on page two.
Well, I don't remember us ever, uh, okaying to hire, to pay wages to people.
Oh, that's, if the DDA wants to do that, the DDA can, but they never have, and don't have the money for that.
Well, it's, it's in there, well.
But that's the, the prior version that was adopted, the only changes we're making are on page two, um, where you see the, uh, underlined areas, and then the strikeout.
I don't see anything on my page two.
One more.
Well, that's page, well, it's, it might say page two, but, uh, yeah, one thing I didn't see in here, uh, on number four on, on, on that page, uh, majority vote of the members present shall be necessary for the, uh, any transactions of the business, or whatever. I see nothing in, in this whole thing, I read it over, that, that even says where the quorum is.
It's fifty percent plus one.
How the, uh, where the, where's it at in here? I've never seen it. I looked through here, and I thought, well, gee whiz, uh, it says that they can do this, the majority of the vote of the members present, that's what it says. It doesn't say anything about how many it takes to do it, so, uh, that was one of my, my questions that I didn't like. And then there's, uh.
What's?
The, uh, number, number four, Article Two. Yeah.
Can I, um, have, let Ms. Otto go, if you're still looking for another issue, Mr. Docket? Ms., Ms. Otto has something, I thought you were looking for another issue, that, that you had with it.
Yeah, I think I do, but I can't.
Okay, well, when you find it, we'll come back to you.
Oh, yeah, well, another thing I want to mention, it, it says the board members here, there's eight board members.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I don't think Doug Walber lives in Northfield Township, I don't think that David Horton works or lives in this township, I don't think that this Jamelle Somar works and lives in this township, we got half of this board don't even live here.
But they have business interests, or they own businesses in the township.
Well, if, if they're gonna be spending our money, I think they should live here.
Well, um, we were attempting to, uh, make a change for, you know, um, a couple of the, um, members who aren't not attending, which was the whole intention of taking a look at the bylaws and how to do that, but we're, it became a little difficult, and, um, so, we had the attorney review it, and this is the language we have, uh, so.
Without knowing where a quorum is, I, I can't vote for this.
Ms. Otto.
Okay, that was one of the questions that I had, is that, the concern is, is that, um, it's the eight members, and I know that the township supervisor is required to be part of this, but.
The ninth.
It just appeared that it doesn't address, I, I didn't know why this was brought in front of us, because the whole memo had to do with, you're, you're not getting enough people there to attend.
Well, that's the background, yeah.
And I don't know if this resolved it.
Okay, well.
Number six.
It, it.
But, the question I have is, um, removed of, of a member is subject to review by the Circuit Court.
Yeah, and that's a legal, um, term that Mr. Um, Ains added, statute.
Okay, so, we would take them to court?
No.
No, 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 it's the, they have, if someone's removed by the governing body, they have a right to an appeal to Circuit Court.
Oh, okay.
If they, if they feel like.
That's not how I'm reading this, though.
No, it says, removal of a member is subject to review of Circuit Court.
Yeah, it says removal of the sub, of the member is subject to review by Circuit Court, which, which means, before you remove them, the Circuit Court has to say, yea, your name. I just thought it was odd, it was written odd. It doesn't say that there's an appeal, it says nothing about appeal in this. And I thought, when do we ever have the Circuit Court review of members of our board?
Oh, I'd like, I'd like to ask the lawyer or something, the.
Okay, I, I, let me.
Does he, does he know, oh, what, what's in this Act two sixty-seven, on page two on the top, sec-, uh, Article Two meetings?
It's the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, well, in the Open Meetings Act, does it say they have to have a quorum, or I, I, it's a.
The Open Meetings Act requires that if you have a quorum, you have to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
I'm sorry, I can't.
The Open Meetings Act requires that if you have a quorum, you have to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
If you have a meeting, you have to comply, what?
If you have a quorum, you have to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so that doesn't say what the quorum is, see, I, I don't know what that article says.
A, a, a quorum's a, a legal, a legal term, I mean, the definite, the supervisor's correct, the definition is fifty percent.
I, I know there has to, a quorum, but I don't, I didn't know if it was in that, you know, in that article, or something.
No, it's not.
Well, I don't see it anywhere else in here, so, that's my.
Um, okay, Ms. Bellinger.
I have one, uh, question or, or point on the page number, on the back of page one, well, the back of page one, at the top, section seven, the board shall cause an annual audit of its business to be made, um, and the result there of, shall be submitted to the Township Board, I don't recall, no, I haven't been here very long, but I don't recall ever hearing of a audit being done of the, uh, DDA, nor the Township Board receiving a copy of an audit that was made of the DDA, so I was kinda curious on that.
Is that done in conjunction, yeah, it's on the back page of, it's right at the top of Art, right in here, um, is this, my assumption was this was done since the Township owns the, I mean, holds those funds, it's done as part of our annual audit?
You do audit.
Yeah, so.
Well, everything, all, the police department, fire department, uh, every department, we have, we don't.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it's, it should be done, but the, this came about, uh, the, the DDA was looking at, um, trying to make sure that we had a quorum for our meetings, and we had, a couple members have, in the past, either they don't come, and we can't contact them, and, and Ms., Mr. Ely is, is one of those, um, they haven't, he hasn't attended a meeting, we can't get a response to an email, we've sent letters.
Who's that?
Mr. Ely.
Oh.
And we think he's moved, sold the business and moved out of the township, and so, it would be good to have a business owner who's actually around to attend the DDA meetings and participate, so, we were looking at ways to, um, to have that turnover if necessary.
Be good to have a resident, too.
Well, we have a resident, Denise Cavish is a resident in the DDA district.
And they should all be residents.
Um, but she actually lives in the DDA district, so, um, the DDA was coming up with rules that if you missed so many meetings, uh, in a year, or whatever, and they had a, a bunch of different rules, and then our attorney said that we couldn't use those rules, that we had to use what was in the statute, which, which is why it got changed to pursuit, to notice, and having been given an opportunity, um, we can remove them for cause, and cause being, you, you never show up, you know, so, but we have to actually inform them properly, and, um, so that's what this is trying to do. The last, um, bylaws didn't have any way to remove anybody. Ms. Selnack.
So, I have two questions, one is, is there anywhere, either through the Opens Meany Act, or in this document, that says a quorum, a quorum must be present to have a meeting?
I don't see that.
It's just a requirement of law, you can't have a meeting without a quorum.
So that's, that's understood, or is it implicit in the public, um?
It's just implicit in the nature of a meeting.
Okay.
If you don't have a quorum, you can't do this.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be documented?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one is, as Ms. Otto has pointed out, was section six and number two, is, you know, I thought it was, how I read it, as it was, I interpreted, was, to remove someone, you had to go to Circuit Court, and now you've clarified that, but, is the language sufficient?
It's literally, it's literally word for word from the statute.
Yeah, I already gave him a, a revision, and he goes, no, this is, this is stated as statute.
Okay, 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 as long as, okay, got it, thank you, thank you.
I was not exercising flights of fancy, I was just copying.
No, 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 thank you, I have.
Why don't somebody enlighten me and tell me where the quorum is for eight people?
It's nine, actually, um, nine, it's.
No, 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 no.
It's five, it's five either way.
That's not the answer.
It's not a quorum of eight people, um, it, we have a total of nine members on the DDA.
Well, then, it has to be at least five.
A quorum would be five.
Five either way.
Five, quorum is five.
Quorum for eight's five, quorum for nine's five.
Yeah.
Five either way.
Five.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
And there was a motion on the floor, right?
And there is a motion, and let's have a roll call vote, since.
What's the support?
Yes, Manley. Okay.
Um, Docket.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chocly.
Yes.
Otto, yes. Bellinger.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
As long as they're not looking for wages.
That's a DDA decision.
Okay.
They can pay them.
Okay, the next item is.
Budget amendments.
Yes, the amendments to the budget. Okay, so we need to start this out with a motion, and, um, I guess, I will move that we, um, adopt the resolution of Township of Northfield, oh, Washnuck County, Michigan, amending the twenty eighteen budget, and the resolution number is eighteen five eight one. Okay, so I've made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, I'll have, I'll let Selnack second, thank you. Okay. So we can go through this and answer questions that anybody might have, or, um, if Mr. Ains has some input.
Just make a, just, just any questions.
Is, does anybody have any questions?
No, we're from there. No questions, approve.
Yeah, really. I don't have any questions. Okay, roll call vote.
Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Docket.
No.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Chocly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Okay, that was good. All right, uh, next item, employee handbook revisions, okay. So, I mean, no, I know you all have had this electronically, and then some of us have had copies printed out, um, the intention with this, uh, with the handbook revisions is just to compile a list of concerns from, that the board has had, uh, about the, uh, employee handbook, and then I would like to propose, um, that we have our attorney, our labor attorney, um, actually go through and re- review this. Mr. Ains has requested a, um, proposal from her on what it would cost, and what she sees currently in the handbook that are potentially problematic, so, um, Mr. Ains, did you want to, um, say anything about this at this time?
The board has indicated this has been discussed for several years now, without getting it revised, uh, I have rewritten these before, but the problem is, I don't know what the case law might be at this point in time, so I think it's important that you have your, um, labor attorney, uh, go through it, make sure that we're on sound legal footing with all the different attributes, and Mr. Burns, Mr. Ains, keep telling me, anything to do with personnel need to go to, uh, Stacy. So, I would recommend that you proceed with this, so you get it going, and that any comments you have about any potential areas of correction can be passed along that we could present to, to her to look at.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger.
I would like to, um, a lot of the, um, revision suggestions and directions and points seem to be made towards protecting of the employee, which by all means needs to be done, and that's correct, but I also would like to see some protections, some real attention given to protecting the township and the taxpayers, taxpayers' money, so I'd like there to be maybe, if we could verbalize that to our, um, attorney, uh, Stacy, if she's going to be working on this, or whomever will be helping us with this, to actually help to look out for township slash the taxpayers, so I would like to, I'm voicing that, that we really need to, that's our, that's our responsibility, in a sense.
Okay.
You know, that everybody's protected, everybody's safe.
Ms. Otto.
So I just wanted to state, um, to piggyback off of, uh, what, um, Tom, uh, just stated, um, it, the revisions of these policies and the updates of these policies does protect the township. Um, if we are having, if we have policies that are outdated, and we're not following the, um, current policies, such as FMLA, um, if that needs to be, um, updated, consistent with state and federal law, if we're not following that, we could be in jeopardy, um, it could be at risk to the township.
I agree. Mr. Docket.
Well, when, what Tom said, kinda, I, I'd like to say that, you know, when, when we have all these things, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, all, for all these employees, it should be, uh, when they do something wrong, take for instance, I'm not gonna mention the name, somebody that works for the township, works somewhere else, gets in trouble, they get laid off with pay, we have to hire somebody, we have to pay their clothing allowance, we have to pay their insurance for their, and their kids, I mean, let's say, hey, if these people did something wrong, and they're found guilty, I believe that they should pay the township back, instead of drawing eighteen thousand dollars when they quit, I believe that they should have to pay their, their, for their clothing allowance and their insurance, and only before we hand them the check, so I would like to see, those are the kinds of things that I think, she didn't mention them, but that's what I see when, what she said was, let's, let's make sure that, that these, I mean, I don't know how legal that is, Jackie probably knows, but, uh, I, I believe these people should have to, uh, you know, why should, why should the people in Northfield Township have to pay for all these wages and everything, and then hire somebody besides to do the job, you know? I don't get it.
Okay.
I think that's talking about union contract, too, though, that's not, that's not the employee handbook, that's. Yeah, anything to do with the union, we can't. Yeah, I don't know, when is the contract up? It's a little bit different, 'cause that's contract.
Well, it should be, my mother used to say, I better not, uh, she, she used to say tit for tat, so.
Both.
If, if, if it's good for the employee, it should be good for us, so.
Both, uh, police contracts and fire contract, both expire June thirtieth this year, so we'll be starting negotiations very soon.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think we wanted to have people understand that the, that the police and fire department, that's a union contract, which is totally different than the, the personnel policy.
That's correct.
No, but they could still have, if we're, if we're gonna use our, does our, um, uh, our lawyer, the township. the township lawyer, have anything to do with that contract?
Absolutely.
Well, then she should be putting in there, yeah, but if you do this, it just reverses, you know?
That'll be part of those negotiations.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
That's negotiations.
We gotta, we gotta be protected. And I don't see why you're just talking about the union. The same thing can happen here with, with any full-time employee.
You're right.
So. So, we, we have to look over the taxpayer, in my opinion, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Zelnak.
So, on that regards, um, for the pay time off, is, will she look at that to see if that's like? I said for the pay time off? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, pay time off.
And we, I mean, will she look at that to make sure that that's kind of standard or we're in line with other municipalities, other government agencies? I mean, that's part of it?
She can certainly bring back some recommendations like that. And if we wanted to direct her in a different way, uh, we could.
I would like her to look, not just to say, this is our policy, it's legal, but is this kind of consistent with other municipalities?
That, that might be a, a discussion as part of a salary study or something like that, um, at some point. Because it's a benefit.
So, I mean, when I look at that too, like, um, unpaid leave, it's like, it says absolutely not. Seems to be, um, I'd just say, if you tell me I can't take it, no one listen, I'll call in sick. Seriously, I mean, so what was the intent of that and is that even how we want to go? Because, I mean, is that what she will be doing? I mean, Ms. Bellisle, will she be looking at that? Because I think, um, you know, why have it? I mean, I don't know if it's that. And then look at meal times, we need to change the paydays because we do it, um, electronic or direct deposit. And so, there are things like that. Will she be looking at that or is, is Ms. Bellisle just gonna be looking at case law and statutes?
I took it as Steve saying that, like, if we see those changes, to let him know.
Okay.
Because I don't know if Stacy knows our direct policies.
Right.
I got a bunch of stuff highlighted to send her too.
Okay, good.
Well, so I should send just the list to Ms., Ms. Ains and Bella, Ms. Bellisle?
I would.
And the whole board?
Right, if you send them to me, I'll forward them to her.
Okay, so I'll send my thoughts to the board as well.
Right, I would like to know what everybody's comments are and we can say, oh, yeah, I didn't think about that, so.
But I mean, is she going to incorporate them or is she just looking at it from a legal perspective? That's.
I thought the intent was that she and I would be working on this together.
Okay.
But she would be advising me from a legal standpoint.
Okay.
And I would be advising her as to what the board has an interest in, keeping, modify, changing, whatever you want to do. But again, this only applies to a limited number of employees because, you know, it does not apply to the, the union employees at all.
Right. And so, with that, with potentially the, um, back and forth, do we still think the twenty-four hours or twenty-five hours is adequate? Or do we think it would be closer to forty?
She's indicated she's revised a lot of these different types of plans before, so this is her estimate.
Okay, thank you.
What, where, where, what was that?
Mr. Wagner has a.
If I could just make one quick clarification.
Yes.
Um, all of the union employees do get the employee handbook also. And if, if there's not something that's in the union contract, then the, the personnel handbook does kick in. So, um, there are, uh, items in that personnel handbook that do, um, actually, um, go to the, the, the police and firefighters.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Bellinger, you had a, another comment?
So, I'm gonna suspect that we're gonna probably come back and discuss maybe options for PTO or one thing or another at later time, is that's correct, basically? That as a board will discuss these things?
That's my assumption.
Okay.
I mean, but she's gonna put it.
She's gonna recommend.
She's gonna make her recommendations and we're gonna say yea, nay, we want it this way or that way, correct?
Or discuss, I would think so, yeah.
And then, Mr. Dockett, on that thing I said was, did we think the twenty-four hours, twenty-five rather, were reasonable or did we think we might be forty hours or more or something, pending on the communication with the township manager? And I believe, I'll let Mr. Ains reply.
He already said.
Twenty, twenty-four hours of what?
Twenty-four hours of her time to update this manual.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
And I just wanted to say, I just wanted to make sure that was what we thought would be sufficient.
Well, she wants, she gets a hundred and something an hour.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, he's. Right. So, we have, do we have a motion? Oh, we haven't, we don't have a motion, okay. Does anybody want to make it? I'll make the motion, okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to accept, um, Ms. Bellisle's proposal to revise the Northfield Township Employee Handbook, as stated in her memo dated March eighth, twenty eighteen. For.
What the, uh, amount's in there?
Um, well, as stated in her memo, um.
Three thousand one hundred and two.
In twenty-five hours, um, at her hourly rate, therefore, the invoice, well, okay. Make the motion. It, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Come see us after, if it goes past that.
Right, okay.
Is that the total?
Yep. Motion to revise, um.
Okay, thank you.
Up to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Any more discussion?
I think it's important to make sure we are compliant with laws. So, I think it is. And I think it's important that the, um, employees get a copy, sign it, look at it, make sure they understand it as well.
I agree.
I think we're very generous to our employees.
Well, it, it, she works for the township and she's looking out for our, for the township's best interest and, um, I'm, oh, so, let's have the vote.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Okay. So, get your comments to Mr. Ains and Ms. Bellisle. Okay, next item, uh, bills.
One, can we put a date on that to get them by? Um, Ms. Ains?
I had a date of March seventh and didn't get any, so, but when do you want them, Mr. Ains? Another week?
Yeah, if you could get them to me within a week or so, I think that would be good.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, I looked through it again today. It doesn't take all that long to read. If you just spend a little bit of time and then tell me what's been of concern to each of you.
We'll do that.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, bills. Got anything here? Of course. Miss, which one are we on?
Paid.
Okay, Mr. Dockett? What have you got?
Page one, front page, uh, not quite halfway down. The ornamentals.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to know if we can, uh, divide them out so we know if we're paying, says, you know, I'd like to know how much the ornamentals are, how much the streetlights are.
Okay, we, we did talk to Ms., um, Carlisle about this and, and it is just entered as orn, oh, overheads and ornamentals coming from the DTE bill. We have not been charged for the ornamentals on the eight-mile road bridge yet. And she, uh, is going to be changing that, um, to streetlights so that it's not confusing. Uh, so, streetlights you may see in the next one, on the open bills instead of, um, yeah, it says, streetlights for February, where in January it says overheads and ornamentals. And I do believe that's, that's being made.
Well, you're confusing then.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think you might be trying to do.
I'm not trying to do that.
Well, I'm asking if the, if we're gonna have two listings, ornamentals and streetlights. That's what I'm asking, yes or no?
No, it, it's not broken out.
Why not? I mean, what does an ornamental mean? I mean, we never had this on our bills ever before until we had that bridge up there.
It's, Mr. Ains, did you talk to Ms. Carlisle about this one also?
I did also and we're just trying to clarify it so there's no misunderstanding. So, there'll be two categories listed.
Two categories, but we don't have any things separate, do we?
Right now, we haven't received a bill from the state, like you said.
Okay, so you, excuse me, I'm sorry. What, did you say, we're going to have two?
Yes, when we start getting billed by the state, then we'll report that separately to the board.
Thank you, that's all I want to know.
Okay.
Uh, one more.
Can I continue with that question though? Should we sing the overheads, streetlights are gonna be like one kind of bill? And then the ornamentals are gonna be the bridge? Is this, is this for me to understand, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah, uh. No, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything on the paid bills? Okay, anyone have anything on the open bills? No? Okay.
I would like to say that it costs the good people of Northville Township three hundred and sixty thousand, uh, twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to run your township for thirty days, the last thirty days, thank you. Well, actually, it was February, so twenty-eight days.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
On the last page on the open one, there's, there's a fee. Is this a fee for having this bond or what is this? If you would, I would just kind of curious, agent fees apparently? We're paying the bank?
Agent fees.
Five hundred dollars for, is this correct? That would be page, uh, three of four, I'm sorry, three of four.
Huntington National Bank?
No, that's a bond fee, that's a bond payment that we have. Okay. And so, that is the fee for having, um, that bond, now which.
Should I say D?
Yes, yes. And it's a fee for having issued that bond at one point and it's an ongoing fee.
Okay.
Now, exactly what SAD, I don't recall which one it was for.
Just the one that goes down Whitmore Lake Road then, I would think. The Whitmore Lake SAD for seventy-nine RUs?
Yeah, it might be, but it's, it's a, it's the fee for having issued that bond with, through Huntington.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Like to make a motion to, uh, adopt the bills and pay the open ones.
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Otto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Minutes, okay, we have two minutes pulled out, uh, February thirteenth. We'll start with.
What do, what do I do with my minutes? I don't really have them.
Anybody want to start with their changes? Any changes on page?
I, I have a page on February thirteenth, page two.
Okay.
Item four, the motion carried seven oh and two opposed.
Yeah.
Yep, so. You can look at mine, but you're not gonna have them.
Okay.
Okay, so that's one. And then, on page three, um, item one, discussion. I think it should say, it was agreed to consider this. I think there might be a two missing. Where are we? We're on page three, discussion, item one, the last sentence. To consider. And then, item, on page three, correspondence and announcement. I, it should be February twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Instead of January. Those are the items I had.
Okay. Anyone have any other items? Did you get all of those, Ms. Lumbel? Okay, thank you.
And then, going to February twenty-seventh, page one. Agenda items, one. Going down to the last sentence. Zelenak added the township is in the process of moving this account. It's, um, you know, all the accounts to Huntington Bank. So, it's moving the bank accounts to Huntington Bank. It's all the banks, not just one.
Okay. I would like to change in, right under in the motion where it says SA, could we just have security agreement written out? In, on the same page, under agenda items, number one, the motion, um, you've got, Zelnak moved Chockley supported to approve the SA between the.
Yeah, good job.
Could we write that out? Thank you. Any other changes on this one? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, they're adopted. Okay, the next, um, item is, uh, options for use of the second floor lease income. Mr. Ains, this is your item.
As we talked earlier, the lease was signed with the, uh, new tenant. We will expect to be getting, uh, the first two months worth of payment in this budget year. And so, therefore, it's something to, uh, be decided both with the current amounts plus with next year's budget. And so, what I have done is just listed a whole lot of different items that I've heard from different people along the way. I'm not asking for a decision by the board tonight, but I wanted it to stimulate some discussion and think, and thoughts for future meetings. Uh, as I had pointed out, the gross rent is three thousand a month. The amount that, um, they receive a credit for the improvements is eight, ten, and eighty-four cents. So, the net amount is two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. And on a year, that'd be twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. I expect all the needs of the township will far exceed those amounts of money. But, uh, at some point, you will need to advise me as to how you want to use the money. There've been a lot of different options. I mentioned, uh, splitting it three ways between police, fire, and, and the general fund. We've talked about a capital improvement fund for this building for future use. And, uh, I'm sure there's a whole lot of other items that would be considered during the budget. And you don't have to spend the two payments for this year. You can always carry those over as part of your fund balance into next year if you don't want to make a decision for that initial amount of money.
So, Lenore?
Go ahead.
Are these funds gonna be going into a separate account, just like the seventy-five Barker? Like, it's gonna be line itemed out once we start getting it?
If you tell us.
I think it'd be a good visual.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you want to go, okay.
Capital improvement fund?
Yeah, we'll let, you bet, know that we want to capture this. Now, it does get a, we'll capture it in a different fund. However, as Mr. Ains has mentioned, we might want to divide it amongst the three potentially or we just keep it for capital improvements. So, right now, we'll capture it and we can decide.
Yeah, capture it somewhere for now.
Because right now, the extra bond payment is split amongst the three of us, meaning the three of us.
Yeah.
Police, fire, and the general fund.
And we're making the payments, so why would we stick more money in there? This money needs to be saved.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Don't, don't let it go to the fire department and the police department.
We'll put it in a separate fund. Yes, we can do that. And actually, if I may, or I can wait to my board member comments. I'll wait. Thanks. I hope I don't forget, I already forgot one, so. Go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
Oh, yes, I might say that, that the lease is signed, they don't have a building permit. Never got one, yet. Don't have a zoning permit, didn't get one. Everything else, they never got because they know they're gonna get it from the township. So, the township should have never signed a lease without that, so. If I wanted to do that, you do, you can just bet that I would never, never get a contract from the township.
Okay.
I don't know why they think they should do it.
So, oh, go ahead, Ms. Otto.
Um, I was gonna ask, um, when is our, the building, um, bond up? Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
I'd, yeah, I'd be interested to know. I'd be interested to know how much we would save in interest if we paid it, um, off.
Not much.
Not much?
We can look at that, I mean, we can-
Not on the end, not in the beginning.
I know, at the beginning. Yeah, I mean, now you're paying mostly principal, and so-
Yeah, now we're paying the principal, that's right.
And, I mean, just one of my philosophies is to, you know, keep cash. Cash is king. It's good to have it.
Okay.
Cash is king.
Okay.
You know, and so if you, you're getting it, then if there's some emergency that comes up, we have the cash to deal with it.
That's true, then we won't be bonding and paying more interest.
Correct. So, I mean, it, I mean, it's something to think about, obviously, either way, but I think at this point in time, it's probably best to keep the cash so that we can use it, but...
One of the things that, um, because we don't know, well, we do have a lease on this for a period of time, but, um, we don't, I really would like to do like we have with the other buildings. Anything that, uh, we have money coming in for, like, the second fire, uh, station, seventy-five Barker, goes to specifically that. I'd like to see us, I know we could spend the, the money on a lot of different things, but we should have a rainy day fund for anything that goes wrong with this building. Yeah, especially that.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Mr. Wagner?
I realize I don't have a vote in this, but I would like to, my comments known. I, I think it's only fair that, to, to the police department and the fire department that somehow this either goes back into the three-seventy fund, which is the maintenance, maintenance of this building, or it goes into the bond. Otherwise, the township keeps all the money of which, you know, we're paying a third of it, so, uh, or two-thirds of it. So somehow, there should be a, a savings to the police and fire department of two-thirds. So either put it as a revenue into the three-seventy fund, which again is the operations of this building, and then we save two-thirds somewhere around there. The general fund saves a third, at least until the building is paid off. And then, I would think it would still stay into the three-seventy fund. But if we put all this in a separate fund, and then somewhere down the road decide to, um, a board, another board then decides to, you know, build another building for the township purposes, then I, I think the police department and fire department are losing out. And this building originally was designed for the police and fire department and, um-
Paid for by the taxpayers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
By the people who own this building.
But, but the general fund has made out on this building. Just, you know, the, the, the original bond was for a police and fire building, which was, you know, split up fifty percent, fifty percent police and fire. And then, the bond that we're paying on the three and a half million dollars, that one was divided up in thirds. So, that math doesn't actually add up to a third general fund, a third fire, and a third police. So, just my opinion.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dockett?
The bond was three million, seven hundred thousand. That is what the bond was. They borrowed three hundred and fifty, three hundred, they paid, they borrowed another three million, five hundred, or fifty. Half, another half a million. So the, the original bond was for, the, the first bond was for three point eight.
But, but the original bond, the original millage, was a police and fire millage to, and then they added on.
Three point eight, and they end up spending, end up spending twice as much.
Right.
All right, Ms. Bellinger?
It, it would, wouldn't it benefit all the fire police and the, um, and the township board if it goes into a fund for capital improvements and repairs of the building? Wouldn't we all have to pay for that nonetheless?
Absolutely.
So I would think that that might be the appropriate place for the funds.
Yeah, I have to agree, the, the three-seventy fund, there's, this building is needing maintenance in all sorts of areas. With our heating and cooling and you name it, we could shoot through that money just trying to improve the climate around here. But anyway, I have to agree that, uh, there's plenty of need here. So, what, what do you need from us, Mr. Ains? More, more ideas, or do you want us to talk about, um, do you plan on?
I, I would suggest that this is one you don't have to make a decision tonight, so you take some time to think about it in the comments that have been made.
Well, if we wanna just make a fund, why don't we just make a fund, agree to, we could make a motion to make that fund, put the money in that, and then use it in the future as needed.
Well, we have until late before we're gonna get anything, so...
So my takeaway from this is that we will have Yvette, for the time being, create a separate fund at this point in time of the revenue, and then we can decide. I mean, that's my takeaway, is that what we wanna tell Ms. Patrick, our controller?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
All right.
Okay. All right, done with this one? Okay. All right.
Make a motion to have this be done? Do we need to make a motion to make a fund or not really? We probably could, have it on record.
Yeah, she'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next item is special meeting times that Mr. Dockett wants to, uh, add.
I, I do-
Six o'clock is, is a challenging time, uh, for our special meetings.
It is for me, but I, I'll go along with whatever. I'm just wondering how the other people, if they work till five o'clock, and then you get held up a few minutes in traffic or something. Pretty hard to get here by six, but...
I think about everybody, I'm the one that travels the farthest. So, yes, uh, when I have to leave at five o'clock, um, in Lansing, uh, there is rush hour traffic. And it takes a good fifteen, twenty minutes just to go one mile. Uh, so that's what I have to deal with before I come here. So, I don't always get here at five o'clock, sometimes I ca, I mean, at six o'clock.
You mean at six o'clock?
At six o'clock, sometimes it can be ten minutes after, fifteen minutes after, depending on traffic.
Some of us are here waiting for the meeting to start, you know, at six, so, that's all, I'm, whatever.
I can do six-thirty better.
I can, I can stay after better than I can come at that time.
I don't know about that. Yeah. I don't know if I can stay after ten or eleven o'clock. Yeah. I mean- So I make every effort to get out of here because even extending it out past ten o'clock gets challenging.
So my only, my, one of my comments is, if we do that, which I'm fine, is that we must end the regular meeting at like nine o'clock. And we have to stick to that. And if we don't-
We should do that anyway.
Yeah, it's quarter to ten, yes, I think we should do that, but we're not doing that. So my concern is, our meetings haven't been done over to ten, and then if we have another hour, it's eleven o'clock. And then, Mr. Ains is gonna have the opposite side of, but the traffic won't be bad if driving home. I mean, so if we do it, we can, what, why don't we try it out one time and see how it works?
What the previous board did is, anything, as soon as it hit ten o'clock, anything that was still on the agenda was moved to the next board meeting.
Right, right. But on this one, I would say at nine o'clock, we would have to do that.
Yeah, exactly.
Because, ten o'clock, then we're talking most likely eleven.
Eleven.
I would say, why don't we try it out? Maybe at our next, um, meeting, let's try it doing afterwards and see if it works.
Okay, Ms. Manley?
Could we do a special meeting at six-thirty and start the board meeting at seven-thirty?
That's kind of, I was in that direction, I was gonna say stop.
Cause I mean, yeah, like if, like if Stacy comes, is Stacy gonna wanna come at ten o'clock?
It's no good for the, the people. The people know where they're starting, so...
I was gonna suggest something like that, start the special meeting at seven and start a regular meeting at eight on certain special meeting nights, but he's got a good point with, everybody knows the meetings are seven o'clock, so...
Right, they're seven o'clock.
And I guess, I don't like that.
Well, if they have to wait, if, like tonight, they had to wait twenty minutes, half an hour, whatever, we, we could just, as a rule, try to not start ever before six-fifteen. And, you know, we do need five of us here to go into a closed session, but we could, we could attempt that. But other, a lot of times, we'll have people here, you know, that are coming, our consultants and things, and to, to give it, leave, leave it wide open about, well, we think we're gonna be done around nine, why don't you show up?
No, we have to be done at nine, no things.
Yeah, I, I think we should do, I still think we should do it beforehand.
We end it.
We end it, we, we, you know, move to public commons, whatever, and move it. I mean, no thinking about it, it has to be done, but you did, uh, Ms. Manley made a, you know, Mr. Ains gets to join the fund all the time, so, early or late. But someone else coming in like Stacy, or even if we had, um, the other two participants earlier, that might be more difficult.
It's more difficult. We, we could always call a special meeting on the other Tuesday and on the, on another Tuesday of the month. And just do it for an hour.
Wait, we already got two a month.
I know, and that's not ideal, so we will do our, we can do our best at six-fifteen.
No.
Or six-thirty.
No.
Mr. Ains?
The, the only point I wanna raise is that i-if you move it to the end of the meeting-
I can't, I can't hear you.
I apologize, Mr. Dockett. Yeah, I only wanna raise two points. The, the first being, it's rare, but we do occasionally have issues, particularly in litigation, that come up that need sort of immediate attention. Yeah, through, under no control of ours, but we have to get it done. And if we put it at the end of a meeting, the inclination is gonna be, well, can we-
We can't fold on it.
Can we push this, you know, can we put it to the next time? And the answer may be, no. We, you know, it's ten o'clock at night, we gotta stay till eleven.
Yep.
Whereas with that at six o'clock, it's easier to sort of handle it. The other issue is, I've, I've had this in other jurisdictions where you have sort of the closed sessions at the end of the meeting, and what happens is, for better or for worse, as Mr. Dockett points out, we all work all day and everybody runs out of gas. So you've got sort of the most important thing on the agenda at the end when everybody's out of gas. And you don't get the high quality that you might hope to get at the end of the meeting that you do at the beginning. But, obviously, I'm here for the whole time, I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
I think what, let's, let's just try to be a little more concise, and we'll, we really can attempt to start our meetings no later, I mean, no earlier than six-fifteen, and shoot for six-thirty, um, as best we can. Okay, I'd like to move on to second call to the public, and if we can get out of here by ten-
Were you gonna make a motion on that item on the agenda that was-
Which one?
The original item number two?
Oh, yes, official, okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table a discussion item number two, preclusion from building and planning zoning meetings.
I'll support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Otto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, thank you very much. Okay, um, second call to the public. Anyone like to speak now? And please do your best to keep it short. Three minutes, I'm turning this on.
Turn it on.
There you go.
George Brown, seven-eight-six-eight, Shady Beach. I just wanna let you know the, uh, the registrations for the ten K, five K run is now open. So, uh, put on your running shoes and get ready to run. Right now, we have a one person signed up, which is great. And of all things, he's from Whitmore Lake and he's from Horseshoe Lake, so he's, and he lives on Delaware, so we're ready to go. And the other thing, uh, is, you know, our, our theme for the parade is, you know, uh, America's Everyday Hero. And, um, I like to, since it's our everyday heroes and so on like that, I'd like to have maybe Jackie and, uh, and Chief Wagner, let's get together because I think he has something special for us and so on like that. Cause it means a lot to me for that everyday hero thing, so like that. America's Everyday Hero, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Oh, I don't, well, set a date?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's it.
Can I ask, um, how do people sign up? You didn't, you didn't say how people sign up for the race?
I don't know.
It's on Genius, I, I'll get the link out.
Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, Tom ran last year. Didn't you?
I did, yeah. I was gonna-
Thank you.
Yeah, I liked it.
Do we have any more, um-
One other thing. As I told you, it's gonna be different, it's not, not gonna be gun, gun start timing, it's gonna be chip timing, so, it's gonna be a lot better. And also, uh, that we're gonna have the national handsome and the flag raising in the beginning, which we never had done before, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If anyone else would like to speak at this time? Good evening.
Uh, David Gordon, fifty-five, fifty-eight, Helena Road. I missed the beginning of the meeting, I don't know if the trees were discussed, the four-hundred and forty trees that are being taken down on North Territorial and on Mast Road. Mast Road is in Dexter, but the three-hundred and forty trees are being taken down on our, on our, in our township. I had some discussions with the people at the county, and I talked to some people in Webster Township at their offices there. The county's argument is that this is for safety. I don't, I don't see where that makes any sense. I mean, there's thousands and thousands of trees next to the road, still. If you run off the road on Territorial, you're gonna get stopped most likely by a tree, even if they take down these four-hundred trees. So, um, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that's being spent to take these trees down. And I don't know, I mean, I'm sure that the tree contractors would be happy, but I don't see the value of anything beyond what they should have done, which is, uh, the culverts. And they got federal highway money, so I'm, I'm really curious how this all happened because they didn't bother to inform this township, they didn't bother to inform Webster. Webster had something like a hundred to a hundred and fifty residents show up at a meeting to complain about this, and they were told, you know, too bad. We have the right of way, and that's the way it's gonna be. I think this is not, uh, not the way the government should run. And it, and it, even though it's a surprise to us, the county's been working on this for a while cause the, the grant money came in, they accepted it in January. They had to apply it a long time before that. But the next thing you know, you've got flagmen on Territorial, and these are, these are big trees coming down, they're a hundred years old plus. People are gonna drive badly, and they're gonna drive drunk, and they're gonna run off the road. Taking down a few trees isn't gonna make us any safer. Uh, I think this township should really have a discussion with the, with the County Road Commission and ask them, you know, how does this happen without you even telling us it's gonna happen? And please justify the fact that you say this is gonna be safer because there's no statistics that they brought in any of their documentation that I've read that show that it's gonna make us any safer at all. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars for really nothing, other than, I don't know, keeping our buddies employed. So, please follow up on that if you could, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board member comments? Um, Mr., Mr. Dockett, yeah, go right.
Uh, you're, you're right, but the county, the county didn't want us to know, most likely, so, that's, okay. I'd like to tell Bill, I'm sorry that he thinks he should get that money. Thanks for getting us the rent, uh, but now we, we don't care about you. We, we got the money, so we're gonna keep it, I think. So, and, uh, let's keep this rent coming in, uh, and I'll be happy, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bellinger?
Um, I do wanna reiterate that it'd be nice to add to the website that people can get a water meter if they wish, a water meter plan, and support, uh, local businesses, please, and services. Uh, they can use your love and lose, and, and use your help. And, um, have a wonderful, have a wonderful week.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Zelenok, do you have anything?
I do. So, in leading, following Ms. Bellinger on that night note, I would like to keep track of things discussed at the meeting that says we're gonna do. We're going to do, you know, put it on the website for the water meter. We're going to make the separate fund. I'd like to have a track of that, you know, who owns it and a, a due date. So we don't lose track of things that we've been talking about doing that maybe we don't remember to do. So I think I would like to have a list to, you know, just a, a action item coming out of the meetings through the minutes that come out that we keep track of so we don't lose it.
Good idea. Mr. Ains can handle that, correct?
Yeah, or, yeah, but I just, I think that would be, cause I had already forgotten about the website and putting the, the sewer meters on it, seriously. And, you know, I would, I figured that out in the meeting, you know, in the minutes and go, oh, yeah. But then, I just think a list would be very helpful. And I am too, I think we need to really tell the county how disappointed we are with, um, their communication on this. And I, I, I agree, that comes to the, they probably didn't want people to really know, know. want people to really know, no.
On the road, on the sewer still.
Yeah, it looks like a road widening plan.
Yeah, yeah, I just think there's a better way to communicate with us as members of a township board.
And the culverts, too. Ms. Manley.
Um, just a quick thanks to everybody that came out, there already left, but, you know, it's nice to hear what's going on out there, like said, the culverts, you know, that's great to hear. And then I guess for the board too, since we're talking about the employee handbooks, we're going to have to talk about raises pretty soon too, so.
Yeah.
With the budget coming up, so kind of keep that in the back of your heads. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Otto.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the community know that Kiwanis Community Easter egg hunt will be on the thirty-first at ten AM.
Easter egg.
The community Easter egg hunt. So you should be seeing more on Facebook and flyers out in the community.
At the middle school.
At the middle school.
The old middle school on Main Street.
Yeah, the old middle school on Main Street.
Okay, great. Okay. And I guess my last comment is, I, I am concerned about our more rural, our dirt roads and the road, and the trees alongside them, I would like to, I will personally talk to the road commission about them, because I know if you keep trees closer in, it does slow traffic. And so I, I get that there needs to be safety on the high-speed roads, but I am concerned about the ambiance on our rural, on our rural roads where we have the nice tree canopies. I'd hate to see the large trees being taken down out there. And so it's a study that I did when I was county commissioner, and we made a recommendation to the road commission about reducing the width of, width of roads in subdivisions, and it was unanimously approved by the Board of Commissioners, so I would like to follow up, I will follow up personally with the road commission about that, and see if, you know, just to make sure we're not having a problem in our, in our rural areas with tree removal.
Can, can I ask Bill about the flashing lights, if you're through, when you're through?
Oh, about-
They, they say they're outlawed now or something, they say.
Yeah, I had that in my report.
I don't understand that, we just put them all up.
I'm not sure what you're speaking of, Mr. Dockett.
I, I am, it's in my report from Watts. Apparently, the rectangular flashing lights for pedestrian crossings, there has been some, a patent dispute with the, the patent owner, and so the federal highway is required- Yeah, they can't be installed now until they get that taken care of. And so we directed Watts to go ahead and write a letter to the federal highway administration and tell them to solve the problem.
Thank you.
So, anyway, that's that. Okay, a move to adjourn?
Support.
Motion by Chuck, please support by everybody. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Done, over. All right.
Me too. Yeah.